Oh, all right, we are live. So let me pull up my participant list and see it looks like folks are coming in. Hello, everybody. Good morning. Good morning. We are just gonna wait a few seconds and let everybody get through the virtual door we just opened. So hang tight with us for just a few seconds longer. There's Kai. Good morning, Kai. All right, we have just a few more people coming in. All right, Commissioner, it looks like it slowed down, so I think you can get going.
Thank you very much, Michelle. Good morning, everyone. Welcome. This is our monthly Fort Collins, La Porte, and beyond community conversation. I appreciate you folks taking the time. Our plan today is to go till from eight thirty to ten, although once again, we may want to end a little bit early if need be, because I think Senator Joanne Genal has a town hall or something like that at ten o'clock. So I want to be mindful of that. Our plan of action for this morning is we have two featured guests. One of them is Derek Rosenquist with the Lammer County Sheriff's Office, and I'll let him talk more about himself and what he's going to update us on, but primarily focusing on insights regarding the informed, you know, thoughts about what's going to happen in 2021 regarding the wildfire season. We have Michelle Byrd, who is our Public Affairs Director. In a moment, she'll give us her little Zoom platform speech. And then we do have Lori Hodges coming on in about fifteen or twenty minutes to give us a bit of an update on Cameron Peak East Troublesome Fire Recovery Efforts. And then I imagine folks might be interested to learn more about what's happening with the snowstorm. So that's the thrust of the meeting today. And then in whatever folks are interested in and whatever time remains, I'm prepared to give updates on everything from, you know, where we're at with the land use code, where we're at with our strategic plan, COVID-19 recovery efforts, vaccine efforts, you know, certainly with Michelle's backup, and then highlight a few things that folks should be aware of, such as environmental stewardship awards, and certainly we're doing a spring recruitment, excuse me, for boards and commissions. And again, if people are interested and time allows, I can, with Michelle and I can provide some more details about those things. So with that said, again, I appreciate Derek being here. He's up in Estes Park, which I believe is predicted to be ground zero for some of this snow. And we'll turn it over to him in a moment. But Michelle, you want to give us a quick update on how folks can participate?
Absolutely. Everybody, as Commissioner Kofalas said, I am Michelle Byrd. I am the Public Affairs Director here at Lammer County. This morning, I'm your Zoom host, so I help Commissioner Kofalas kind of handle the the technical side of this meeting as well as kind of make some notes. But just really quickly, we hope you engage this morning. It's called a conversation for a reason. There's two different ways. You can either ask questions or make comments. You don't always have to just ask questions. So you can use the Q and A box. So that's kind of like a chat box that you would normally see. You'll see it at the bottom of your screen where the chat box would normally be. Feel free to put in questions at any point in that chat box. And we will get to those. And then if you want to actually chat with us, you can use the raise your hand feature. So you'll see that kind of under your panelists, attendees at the bottom of the screen as well. Raise your hand. That lets me know that you want to talk to us, and I'll walk you through getting yourself unmuted. I think that's all I have, Commissioner.
Thanks, Michelle. And before I turn it over to Derek, one other thing I wanted to quickly mention is that our next scheduled community conversation is Saturday, April tenth, I believe. And I mentioned that just for folks to prepare and maybe spread the word, because the more we can get participation in these, I think, the better in terms of how the county strives to serve the public. But also, if you have suggestions on topics or guests that we ought to invite who have greater expertise than myself, we would welcome that. Derek, thank you so much, sir, for being here. You're on.
All right. Good morning, everybody. My name is Derek Rosenquist. I'm an emergency services specialist with Lammer County Sheriff's Office. We're a small unit, five people. And then we'll also be bringing on six full-time firefighters a little bit later this year. It's a new program for us to supplement our on-call programs. We're all excited about that. Folks have been asking a bit about what the predictions are for the upcoming fire season 2021. So looking at some of our data, the latest one that the NWCG National Fire Wildfire Coordinating Group and the Coordination Center up in Boise and the local geographic areas pushed out was from February twenty-sixth. And they'll update these about every other month as we get closer, but it's a hundred and twenty-day outlook. So kind of looking at that through June, we're seeing a normal potential for large fires. June, we're usually kind of active for initial attack. It's one of our busier months. And then about mid-June, in the southern half of the state, we start to see a higher potential for large fires. But one caveat with that, even though we are predicted for normal potential for large fires, that means we still can have some. A key factor, what we're looking at is we're following La Niña, which is the Pacific Ocean, a cold, colder temperatures in there along the equator, and that's what we were in last summer. Last summer, we were very busy with initial attack. The monthly or the monsoons that usually come in mid-June to through July that bring moisture were very dry, and that had a big impact on us. Similar to last summer, we were above-average temperatures and below-average precipitation, and that is predicted to continue through September. So we're kind of set up the same way as we were last summer. The key factor is going to be whether or not La Niña starts to diminish, which hopefully would then bring a normal monsoon season where we would get more moisture kind of midsummer. It would give the fuels a chance to bring, get that moisture into them. And if that doesn't happen, like last summer, the fuels never really got any moisture into them. We may, well, the snowstorm may change some things between now and the start of greenup. This is normally a time of the year when we get some good, you know, wind-driven grass fires in the spring, and then the grass is green up, and that kind of tamps things down until we start hitting June. So we'll see what happens there. Big thing is with drought. We're in pretty good drought right now. And yes, we do have a good snowstorm coming in. But to get back to normal, quote-unquote "normal," we're going to need two or three more of these, according to some of the latest forecasts that I've seen. So this will definitely help, but this winter has been very dry. The fuels have continued to be dry. So there hasn't been a whole lot of moisture recovery, and a big part of that is getting that moisture down into the soil where the trees and the brush can take that up and, you know, regenerate themselves with high moisture contents in the spring that should hold on through part of the summer until their natural dormancy cycle kicks in later in the summer. The snow is great, but again, with the the predicted warmer and drier temperatures, how long does that snow stick around? If we have a very warm spring, that snow can melt off and evaporate very quickly and not get a chance to get down into the soil where the vegetation can take that up and hopefully recover a little bit from some of the drought stress it's been under. The other concern we have with that, of course, is if we have a fast spring runoff, especially in the Cameron Peak burn scar is the potential for flash floods and debris flows. So yeah, we're making preparations. Our six-person initial attack crew supplemented with our on-call program. We've got about fifty firefighters in that. You know, I think we're looking relatively good for the summer as far as response, and we also have a lot of strong relationships with the Forest Service, the Park Service, and of course, all of the volunteer fire departments in the area. Fortunately, unfortunately for them, they had a lot of experience last summer, which they learned from. So their abilities have been enhanced by the experiences they had last summer. Of course, it's not the way we wanted them to get that experience. So, but yeah, good, strong relationships. I think we're setting up pretty well for this summer. We are expecting, similar to last year, as far as activity, though, I think we had, if I'm trying to remember right, responded to, actually responded to at least forty fires outside of Cameron Peak Fire. And there's probably some others that we did not respond to that the Forest Service or the Park Service did, or even some of the fire departments responded to, but they didn't need our help. The nice thing, ninety percent of fires are caught in that initial attack stage. We were doing really good at keeping fires down to around that one and a half, maybe two acres last year. Then when the monsoons didn't come, they were just getting a little harder to catch, got a little bigger, and then, of course, August thirteenth happened. And part of that was it was so far out and where it was with the beetle kill and everything else, long response time and then just trying to get to it. It was acting so, moving so quickly. It just wasn't safe to put people in front of that. So if anybody's got any questions, I would be happy to answer it. Like I said, the big thing, we're looking to see if La Niña starts to weaken, which would hopefully bring a better monsoon season, a wetter monsoon season this year, which, of course, the rains brings its own issues with the fire scar in the Cameron Peak. So, but we're planning ahead for that as well. Getting, looking at pre-positioning resources and, you know, even if we have a rainstorm predicted, you know, maybe getting people out ahead of it and upstream so that we're not running up to where the water is coming from, but following it in from behind. So lots of planning going on for this summer, both for floods and for fires.
Derek, thank you. That was very interesting. Folks, are there questions for Derek?
So Commissioner, we do have some folks with their hands raised. I'm not, they've kind of had their hands raised maybe before Derek started talking. So I'm not one hundred percent sure if they're directed at Derek or not. And then we do have a question in the Q and A. So I'm going to start with the question in the Q and A. And if folks have, it looks like Hal has his hand raised, so I'm going to assume his question's for Derek. Hal, if your question isn't for Derek, I'd ask you to lower your hand, and we'll get to you when we kind of open it up for general questions. So we'll start with a question in the Q and A from Costas. I am concerned with flooding potential this summer, specifically a large, specifically a large, several semi-truck size slash pile near the riverbed across from CLP. Does the county have plans to clear this or mandate the property owner to clear it?
I think that would be a question for Lori, if that slash pile, CLP, I'm not familiar with that abbreviation.
That's the Cachet-Liputer School there up in La Porte.
Oh, okay, up in La Porte. I'm not sure where that slash pile came from, so that may be a good question for Lori. I thought that might-
I would agree, Derek. And if these slash piles are located on private property, which I thought that's what I understood from Costas' question, then that creates another dynamic that we need to navigate. And what is the role of the county? But we can certainly bring that up when Lori Hodges joins us. Yes.
Yeah, and Custas was asking who's Lori. Lori is our Emergency Management Director, and she's going to be joining us a little bit later on this morning. There was a Emergency Operations Center briefing about the snowstorm happening that started at eight-thirty this morning. So Lori needed to lead that conversation, and then she's going to join us. So I'm going to save your question, and when she gets here, we'll ask her that. The second question from Megan says, can we resurrect the firewood collection this year to reduce forest floor fuels? Charles Bandler, retired, used to operate that. Perhaps Mr. Rosenquist's new hires could manage that question. Also, oh, sorry, one more question. What do you expect with the pandemic ending in terms of man-made fires with everyone goes hog wild?
As far as the firewood collection, if that's on Forest Service land, the Forest Service is the one that issues the permits for that. The county cannot tell people to go out and just pick up fuels, cut down trees, all of that. That's all federal. As far as what people can do around their own homes, though, very similar, get out on your property, especially if you're out in the urban interface, pick up all of the dead and down on your own property. Because that right there, just even doing that and limbing some trees up around your house up to about six feet can provide firefighters a more defensible area that they could potentially work in if we do get other fires. Regarding the man-made fires and people going hog wild, you know, a big part of that is looking back at what our weather factors are. We do have a matrix that looks at fire danger. It looks at staffing levels, how many firefighting resources we have in the area, and what our seven-day, thirty-day forecasts are as far as how warm and dry it might be, how much fire activity there is in the area. You know, of course, there's always accidents that happen. And again, a lot of the camping in the forest is all Forest Service land. So, you know, we will help the forest with education and whatnot. But it comes down to, with quantitative data, whether or not we enter into fire restrictions or fire bans. Again, a lot of that has to do with weather, fire activity locally, fire activity around the nation, and resources available to respond.
Thank you, Derek. And if I may quickly add just a couple of points, you know, the reference that Derek made to data-driven decisions, periodically, the emergency services folks, Justin Whitesell and others, will come to the commissioners and give us an update on what those conditions are. And ultimately, they'll make a recommendation if indeed we should do any kind of fire restrictions. So, and then we do our best to coordinate, you know, with the US Forest Service, because as Derek said, a lot of our public lands are federal public lands. So I wanted to add that point. And then the other thing, and maybe, Michelle, you could, it's more of a Lori Hodges thing, but, you know, we do have on our wildfire website, you know, there's a link to resources, and I know some of that also relates to CSU Extension. And so there's a lot of collaboration going on, but there's a lot of good information and resources to help folks, you know, deal with their own properties, you know, to make them safer as far as downed wood and that sort of thing. I wanted to share those two points.
Thanks, Commissioner. I will absolutely put some links in the chat box for folks. I can't do two things at once, so I can't talk and put in links at the same time. I have learned that about myself. I will either start typing what I'm saying or saying what I'm typing. So I will get those links in the chat box. I did want to point out really quickly, we do have a call, someone who's called in, and I didn't go over how that person can let us know if they have a question or they want to say something. So for the individual who called in, all you need to do is press star nine if you feel like, if you want to engage with us this morning, that'll let me know that you want to, that you want to chat with us, and then I'll walk you through the steps to unmute you. So Commissioner, should we, Hal, his head is hand raised for quite a bit. So I'm, Hal, I'm going to let you talk. You know how to unmute yourself.
I know how to do a lot of things.
Go ahead.
This is for Derek. The Crystal Fire, the High Park Fire, the Cameron Peak Fire burned an awful lot. And our experience up here, I live on the Buckhorn, by the way. Our experience up here is in, you know, we would think that we burned up most of the world. What are the chances of seeing, in this area, the Cameron Peak Fire, those other fires I mentioned, of seeing something else, another event like that this year?
Again, trying to predict the future is hard. An event of that magnitude probably is not going to be the same as we had last year. You know, again, so much depends on the weather, if we get the monsoons. One thing that I was seeing is on Labor Day, when the fire made its large run, where it ran into the Cameron Peak Fire, or I'm sorry, where it ran into the High Park Fire on the Pingery Park Road, it slowed down significantly, and where it came up and over into the Buckhorn, that was an area that hadn't burned. So a lot of it depends where the fire came from. If you're in a burn area or have a recently burned area between you and a new start, that will affect fire behavior. It gives us, it'll slow it down most likely. It will give us an opportunity to get in there. Aircraft will be a little more effective if you don't have the heavy tree canopy. You know, like I said earlier, it's, we're looking at normal potential for large fires. A key factor with Cameron Peak, if you look at the progression maps, those major runs were all associated with extreme high-wind events. And that seems to be pretty common here on the Front Range. We can get some decent-sized fires, but it really takes those high-wind events to really push them. We saw that with the Crystal Fire, seventy mile-per-hour winds at night, which pushed it, you know, across the roads and that one spot fire, I forget. I wasn't with the county at that point, but I know we had one spot fire about a mile away. So again, heavy winds. Same with the High Park Fire. A lot of the large fire growth days occurred with heavy winds. So if we don't get the wind component, probably won't see as fast a growth, which helps out. And so much of it depends where it starts. If it's deep in the woods and there's a lot of beetle kill, it's just tough to get people in there safely. Just hiking in with the snag hazards and then the heavy fuel loading and fire weakened trees. It's a balance between firefighter safety and trying to get this thing out, and sometimes we have to back off until it gets to a point where the fuels are in a better state, where we can actually attack it with less danger of the firefighters getting killed with escape routes, length of time to access, length of time to get out to a safe area. Does that help, Hal?
Kind of. Are you saying all this with your fingers crossed, number one?
Yes and no. I'm thinking historically, most of our fires stay pretty small. And we also tend to have cycles about every eight years or so. I know Crystal Fire was a significant fire for a lot of people. But when you start looking at High Park, start looking at Cameron Peak and going back, there's usually a cycle of about eight to twelve years between these extremely large fires. So I think we've got a little bit of breathing room. At some point, La Niña is going to weaken. It may not be next summer, but that should give us a bit of breathing room before we start really drying out again.
Yeah. Yeah, that's excellent.
Yeah, I know the folks in the Buckhorn have been just beaten up the past fifteen years.
Yeah, the beating up is continuing. The reason I said about with your fingers crossed, the Crystal Fire fried about five homes and a lot of property, as you well know. But this Cameron Peak Fire was kind of interesting thing to us because it also burned a couple of homes and almost fried my tractor. But the issue is, there was a fire up there, and it was very serious. It burned a lot of stuff. And yet, here comes the Cameron Peak Fire and like kind of ignored that, what you would think is reasonable thinking. And it just went right through there again, burned another property, burned a house, or whatever they had up there, and a couple of other things. And the amazing thing is, yeah, and the amazing thing is, it went right by a metal barn that had just been erected the year before and had a great big RV in it. And it's not even, not even toasted a little bit. So this fire thing is, I would almost say, if you are trying to predict anything, everybody should think about it and say, ho, it can burn again. And the other, yeah, and the other thing is, you just, you know, people say, oh, it's all burned, so it's not going to do it again. It will. The other thing is, you're talking about slash, and that is a favorite hot point for me. Every time people do slash, or they cut slash and they put it, and a lot of them pile it along the creek. Oh, that's wonderful. Guess what happens when the water rises? Jeez, it gets stuck at all the culverts, all that slash. And then what do you have? A flood. And then Lori Hodges can talk about that later on. There's another, there's another situation. Wait a second. And I showed this to John.
I'm happy to hear from you.
Yeah. There's an RV parked in the Narrows of County Road twenty-seven up here, and it's used occasionally. It's about two feet above where the water is right now. When the creek floods, that sucker is going to float, and it's going to block one of the nice bridges that were put in after the thirteen flood. It just, I just look at it all, and I say, well, it's déjà vu all over again. And I just look at it, and I don't see anything happening. I'm just going to say, see you next flood, which is not too far away. Yes, John, what were you going to say?
Just, it's nice to hear your voice, Hal. And I know that Lori Hodges will be joining us soon. I had a couple of comments, but I'm going to defer those. And Derek, I don't know if you want to respond, but I'm also mindful that there's at least one person who may have called in, and there's a few other questions in the Q and A. So Derek, did you want to say anything? And there's Lori. Anything else? And then maybe we can go to those questions, and then we'll turn it over to Lori Hodges. And Derek, you're welcome to stay with us if you can.
I guess the last thing I would tack on to Hal there, the biggest thing is people working with defensible space around their homes. Again, it's these large wind vents where we see the most damage to structures. And ninety percent of homes burn not from the fire itself, but from the embers that land on them and land in areas. So so much is dependent on, you know, ongoing maintenance around the house has a high potential to save things. So but thank you very much for your time and attention.
Eric, thank you. I mean, this was, from my perspective, incredibly interesting and very helpful. Michelle, did you want to go to those questions? And then Derek or Lori could maybe respond. You might as well just get thrust Lori right into the hot seat.
Absolutely. I think Lori is used to being thrust right into the middle of situations, so I don't have an eye at that. So Custas did have a question earlier, just to kind of update Lori. But he does have his hand up, so I'm going to go straight to allowing Custas to talk. So Custas, you just need to find the, there should be now, there should be an unmute button at the bottom of your screen. If you can find that, you need to unmute yourself. There you go. Can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, great. Good morning, everybody. I'll just try and keep this brief, but I just wanted to comment. You gave me a lot of good information. Certainly, we need to partner with the Fed, CSU Extension. I'll talk to Lori or and also Derek, you know, it'd be nice to talk with all these folks, but I just see a tremendous opportunity for Lammer County to partner with the Fed and in an effort to clean up the forest, really get into- partner with the Fed and in an effort to clean up the forest, really get into biofuels. I know I, you know, a lot of this green movement is really burning, you know, timbers and, and there's resources that we can repurpose this stuff. So I, I own a tree service locally. I know there's a lot of, you know, Forest Service, CSU, all this stuff. I just see a tremendous opportunity for us to utilize public and private sectors to try and mitigate, you know, the, the fire potential that we have up here. I, I didn't know if there was plans in the works to, to do that, but you know, Fort Collins, Laramie County could really be, you know, maybe at the forefront of one of those green energy sectors. So that was just a comment for y'all.
Thank you so much. And I'll, can I, I'm going to throw your question you asked earlier out to Lori. Is that okay?
Great. Yeah. And do I, how do I unmute myself?
I will do that for you. So what I'm going to, I'm going to keep you on until we've gotten your questions answered in case you have a follow up, if that's okay.
Great, thank you.
And forgive, forgive me, Michelle, but I noticing the name and I, I can't help but make the Greek connection. Costas, I, I presume you're Greek and I don't know what your, your proficiency is in the Greek language.
I, I know Takannis, that's about it.
You know more than me. All right, Lori. So we're hoping you can help answer this question. So earlier, he asked, I am concerned with the flooding potential this summer, specifically a large, several semi truck size flash pile near the riverbed across from CLP. Does the county have plans to clear this or mandate the property owner to clear it?
You know, so I, I do not know the answer to that. If I can get the specifics about where that's located, I can kind of try to figure that out. We do have some efforts that we're going to be doing along the Cache Lapooter. We've been partnering with the Watershed Coalition as well as the City of Greeley and the City of Fort Collins to do some erosion control work and then also some work within the river stream to try to keep the water quality good. Because we know that we have a lot of areas along the Pooter that sediment's going to flow down as well. So both flooding as well as kind of that sediment flow are the two things that we're most concerned about. And I will say, and Derek may have already said this, you know, it's such a, it's such a large burn area. We will see problems this year and into the next few years, even if we could do everything that we wanted to do this spring. This was a, you know, a, a burn with high severity in some of these areas and even if we could do all the erosion control that we want, we are going to see some issues. So it's important that everybody just remain vigilant. Have a, have a way to get warnings and we're going to do everything that we can this spring and summer. But it's going to be mainly at four primary spots that are the highest severity for this fire. So to, to answer your question though, specifically for the, that slash pile, I don't know where that slash pile is. So if I had some more information, I could round up kind of who the property owner is and what might be going on with that and get back to you. So if I get your contact information, then I can do that. And then you also mentioned biofuels. I did want to say that, you know, we looked into this as a county a while back. We, we really liked the idea of this partnership where, you know, you have all this timber that might need to be removed, but we couldn't do a lot of mitigation efforts because we had no place to put the timber and then the transportation costs were just too high. And so it just ended up being to where the, the obstacles were so bad that you can't really make it happen, right? So if you do have the ability to have biofuels processed, you know, in the county and, and then you don't have those hard, high transportation costs, that would really be a great solution. So, you know, I've always been in support of that. We just still have that barrier of we'd have to move everything out and it became cost prohibitive. So I don't know what the county's thinking now, but that was a few years ago that we had talked about that.
So, go ahead, Commissioner.
Just, just, I'd just like to get through the questions and then I turn it over to Lori, just and also to welcome you, Lori. But I, maybe Lori can give us a quick highlight on, on the snow, the snow situation since she was in that emergency operations center briefing and then talk, I mean, we invited her here to talk about recovery efforts and she's already starting to get into that. But there are a couple more questions out there, right, Michelle?
There are, there's a couple of questions from Kai and I'm wondering if maybe Lori should give her update first and then we can go. Kai's, Kai's questions might kind of relate to Lori's update. If that works, I hope that's okay with you, Kai. So that works for everybody. Let's do it.
Good plan. Thank you. Welcome, welcome.
All right. I know that Hal had a question for me too. I miss Hal, you know, we haven't talked in a while since the flood. So I know he's on the line as well. So anyway, for recovery, you know, we have a few things going on, but the difficulty with this fire was the fire was really put out by winter. And so we ran up against winter, the fire was put out. So really we couldn't do a lot during the winter. Once the snow started to fall and everything froze. So we do have to kind of wait until the conditions are right this spring where we don't have all the snow on the ground to be able to do the debris clearance that we want to do. We also want to do erosion control, but again, you have to have the ground cleared to be able to do that. So we're running into a tight timeline of, you know, that, that spring weather and severe weather that we might see. We could get some rain events while also trying to get some work done. So we're trying to get all, everything in place, all the permitting and everything that we need in place now. So whenever that right window is, we can get people in the field. So a few things that we're going to work on, one is suppression repairs. So anybody who had a dozer line or a hand line on their property, whether it's within the fire area or outside the fire area, we have them on a list and they've already been contacted and they've already given us permission to do some repairs. So we just finished the contracting piece of that this week. So we, we are awarding a contractor and then that contractor is really going to be ready to do those repairs as soon as they're able to do them. We don't want to go out too soon because again, you know, if you're doing dozer line repairs with heavy machinery and it's super muddy out there, you know, we don't want to cause more damage too. So there's a, there's a, a kind of a, an area or a timeline that we're looking at there too. The other thing that we want to do is we want to do some debris operations. So a big debris operation that we want to do is stream debris. You know, we learned in the flood that if debris is loose, you know, when we get to spring runoff, we're going to have a lot of that debris come down and then it blocks culverts and it blocks bridges. And then that causes more infrastructure and home damages because the water goes around those dams. So whatever we can do to try to get rid of the loose debris that's in the streams all throughout the fire area, we're working with the Natural Resource Conservation Service on that right now as well as FEMA. So that's a big thing and that can probably start earlier than some of the other debris operations. Because we want to start when the water's low, right? And when, when we don't have a big flow. The next debris operation that we have is called right of way debris. And this is going to be for those people who had structural damages within the fire area or any kind of household waste. So those folks will be able to go to a county right of way. We'll have some lined dumpsters and they can put their stuff there and then our debris hauler will take those, that stuff away. That'll save people on landfill fees and on the hauling costs. So that'll also be starting. We already have a debris contractor in place. So we have our coordination meeting next week to kind of start that process and see where we're going to put all those dumpsters. I do know that every, a lot of people have vegetative debris on their lands. We have some volunteer organizations that can help with hazard trees. A couple of volunteer organizations do that for, you know, on your property, if you have some trees that might fall onto your home or, or that caused some kind of a risk. So the volunteer organizations are available to do that. And we do have a, a case management that can work with any homeowner on that, that piece. The other piece is hazard trees on private and public roads. So we know that the trees that burned in the fire area could easily come down and cross the road and then block access for, or egress, right? And we're coming into fire season, we're coming into severe weather season, we're coming into flood season. And so we just want to make sure that we're looking at both public and private roads. We worked with FEMA on this. We're trying to get them to say okay to the private roads. But the commissioners have already said, you know, they understand the public safety risk of this. And therefore we're going to move forward with just making sure that those hazard trees along roadways are cleared. And that way we can make sure that that egress stays open. So that's another thing. It's going to start as soon as we can. So that's kind of our debris operations. The next thing is we are working, like I mentioned, with Natural Resource Conservation Service on the Emergency Watershed Protection Program. And so what that is, is it allows us to work on private lands. It's one of the only federal agencies that allows us to work on private lands to do erosion control work. It'll help us to armor some of the road, the, the county culverts. We can't replace culverts with this program, but we can armor them so that they can withstand a higher flow so that maybe our roads don't wash out and we can keep those open. So we're also working with, you guys have probably seen wattles, you know, those, those long straw tubes or wood, wood chips tubes that keep erosion from coming down. We do have four areas that we're going to work on hopefully this spring and this summer. So we're going to start in kind of the rustic Goodell Corner area, the Manhattan Road and then out to Pooter City. So that's kind of one big project area that we've already identified and we already have people designing what we want to get done there. That's going to include erosion control. We're working with the US Forest Service on maybe felling some trees for erosion control as well, because a lot of that's US Forest Service land. And then we're working with the Conservation Service, Laramie County Conservation Service to actually go out as well as our volunteers and place those wattles in, in strategic locations so that we can keep the sediment from coming down into the streams. Roden Bridge is also working on maybe replacing a couple culverts along that path. Two, CDOT is also looking at that area to replace culverts that go under Highway fourteen. So it's, it's a big effort between the watershed, City of Greeley, City of Fort Collins, us and CDOT. That's one area. The next area is Monument Gulch area. So when I say area, it's kind of that whole area around, you know, Monument Gulch. We are looking at the Lazy D Ranch as well. And then we have the Buckhorn County Route forty four H, which it's a bummer. We just are now rebuilding that road from the flood. So I feel Hal's pain. Anyway, so the, the Buckhorn area as a whole, we're looking at for also some erosion control, property protection. And then finally, we're looking at Storm Mountain and the retreat. Now that area didn't burn, so it seems weird, but there's all of these gullies and, and these trenches that kind of come into that area. And so erosion control is going to be a big deal for Storm Mountain and for the retreat. So we are also looking at some erosion control efforts there. The design for these takes some time. So we're going to really start with rustic. Get that going so we can start the work as they're designing the next phase and then the next and the next. So that's kind of where we're at. So through spring and summer, you guys are going to see some of those, some of those efforts going on. And then if we do have some extra supplies at the end of this, like we have extra wattles or we have extra chips from the wood, we're going to give that stuff away. So we're hoping to take the hazard trees, chip them or mulch them and then provide that mulch for either mulching operations that we need to do or for chipping and putting into wattles so other people can use it for their property. So that'll also be coming up later. And I know I talked like eight thousand miles an hour, but I had a big report. So I wanted to just go every, go over everything. So hopefully that helps. If anybody has questions, I'm, I'm here to help.
So Commissioner, if it's okay, I'm going to jump into questions.
Yes, of course. And Lori, Lori, I take a deep breath. Okay, I'm good.
So I'm actually going to start first. This isn't a question and I think Costas, jump in if I, if I was naming this wrong, he would like to be added to your list of contacts. I assume he's talking to you Lori and not me or the Commissioner. So if I'm wrong with that assumption, please let us know. So if you could put, I actually have your email and you're in the registration Costas, so I could either send that to Lori or if you want to, Lori, I think can, oh, she just put her email in the chat box. Even though she put it only to the panelists and not to the attendees. So I'll have her do that again.
All right, I will do that again. But I will tell you, actually today before this storm and we get busy with that, I am putting together, you know, I have a bunch of HOA lists and I have a bunch of, I have the entire list of all the people who had damages. And then I have another list of just people who want additional information. And there's a lot of people in the fire area who maybe didn't lose a structure, but maybe they lost trees and they lost their land and they want to, they want some information about seeding or rehab. And so anybody who wants that information, I am creating that master list today for kind of all those different groups. So one thing I wanted to ask is if you guys have HOA lists with contacts for any of the fire area, that would be super helpful. And then also if you guys do want some information just about what's going on along the way, send me an email and I can make sure that you get on that list. So I'm going to send that back out to everybody since I messed that up.
Okay, so Kai has had a lot of questions that she's been waiting a long time for and I'm going to go backwards with them. Because the first one I think is an easy question. I think the kind of follow up questions are a little, maybe a little more conversational. So first she asked, will you have a map of the location of the dumpsters?
Yes, we will have a map of the location of the dumpsters and we will put that out for everybody.
Second question, which is a little bit longer and it doesn't necessarily always have to do with fire, but I think there's a connection there. So. What about the unmanaged dispersed recreation and how can we better protect and inform users of our state and US forests? How can we address the piles of the many landfills popping up in Limer County's backcountry? Human waste is horrendous and the birds and the four leggeds are terribly upset. What about QR codes on signage and designating undesig- undesigned areas? That's a, that's kind of counter, does it cancel? It's like a, a negative, negative. Undesignated designated areas, humans can be so destructive with their subpar fire practices. So I know that was long winded and there was a lot, or not that you're long winded Kai, but I know that was long and there was a lot there. So I'm just going to turn that back over to you.
I don't know if Derek would be able to answer that probably better than I would. I don't know.
So again, and I know I'm sounding like broken, broken record on some of these things and Commissioner, I apologize for this. So much of that is federal lands. We can talk to them, we can make suggestions. But we have no authority to close down areas. We can do, the sheriff's office can do a little bit of enforcement, but usually that's more for life safety issues, like immediate life safety issues. And the Forest Service has one law enforcement officer for an area that covers Limer County out into Weld County, down into Boulder County. You know, so she, she's working hard doing what she can. And on the fire side, they have folks out in the summer who are trying to promote education and some stuff, but we do the best we can to making suggestions to the Forest Service. But again, it's such a large area and it is theirs. I know when I'm out and about, especially on weekends and I see stuff, I always try to stop in and talk to people and educate them. But again, I have no authority to enforce federal regulations and I'm personally, I'm not a law enforcement officer either. So it is a partnership. But again, a lot of it comes down to what the forest can and cannot enforce and what the sheriff's office can and cannot enforce. Totally understand the concerns with where that question is coming from. And those, some of those illegal dumping grounds.
Right. And I can say, oh, go ahead, Lori.
I was going to say, you know, social media is a horrible and a wonderful tool all at one time. But it is good though for community members. I'm not talking about the shaming part of social media. I'm talking about educating. So if you're out there and you see something, just educate people about that. And I do think that people sharing stuff with people, it just makes them more aware and then maybe people will take, you know, ownership of that as well. So I don't want the public shaming. I'm not a supporter of that. But I am a supporter of, you know, you take a picture of something while you're out, you know, hiking and you just let people know this, this isn't right. You know, we need to do better for our natural lands. We need to take care of it. So I think that would be good. And then also to Derek's point, you know, I get this question a lot too for US Forest Service roads, you know? Like what are you going to do for this road? What if there's erosion and sediment across it? Again, we have no authority on those roads. I can definitely pass the information along to the US Forest Service and, and, and they'll hopefully, you know, take measures for that. But again, if they don't, I don't, I don't have any way to force that issue. And so we work very closely with the US Forest Service. We have a great relationship with them. But again, it would be, it would be the similar as us, you know, coming onto private land without ever asking you and, and planting a tree or doing a bunch of work there. And you never asked for that. So it's exactly the same thing where we have to, we have to manage that.
Just to add real quick, Michelle and colleagues, at, at our next Red Feather Lakes Community Conversation, which I believe is scheduled for March twenty fifth, we will have some folks from the US Forest Service to respond to questions and give us an update on the, the arrangement that we worked out regarding the concerns having to do with recreational sports shooting in the federal lands, public lands west of the Crystal Lake subdivision. So the, some of those folks will be on participating in that meeting and actually so will Shell from Emergency Management. And I believe, Derek, I believe Justin's going to join us for that meeting as well. Justin White cell. Thank you.
And I just wanted to add before we go on to the next question. I do know these conversations are happening within the US. Those, those exact topics are, are not unknown to, to our public sector, you know, our public lands folks. I, just like Lori and Derek, we all have relationships with the US Forest Service. I know there's constant conversation about the results of overuse and, and how do we communicate to folks, especially those that are coming from out of state that don't have the experiences that we do, that, that we um that don't have the experiences that we do, that that we kind of know how to camp and how to do it safely for ourselves and and for those around us. So those conversations are happening. I don't, I don't think there's a a simple answer. Um, but but know that they're having those conversations and and they know that there's problems and and they're going to do the best they can. I I think they're good questions that we all have to kind of talk about and it might be, we all have to work together to kind of educate the public.
And Michelle, you've reminded me of another effort that's underway, and that is the um, there, there is an effort called No Co Places, No Co Places twenty fifty. And it's a collaborative effort to look at all of these issues regarding increased population growth and how that's impacting our um our recreation areas and our open spaces and our natural resources. And I'm sure Michelle can put that link on there, but it's, there are five counties involved in that. Um, the Arapahoe Roosevelt National Forest folks are involved in that as well as Rocky Mountain National Park. And I believe that's looking at addressing a lot of these issues. So folks may may want to check out that and and Limer County is definitely involved in that effort.
Okay, so Hal was next in line. So Hal, I think you have a question for Lori. You just need to unmute yourself.
I have about, I have about three million questions for Lori and she knows I always have questions.
Well, why don't you pick the top two and then um we're, we might have to go on to other folks too.
All right, well, they're not long questions. Um, on that slash pile, find out who put it there. It's their responsibility. It's nobody else's. Um, and you know, you ask that question and it's people looking, they, well, look at that big slash pile. How did I get there? And they put it there? They should clean it up. And that's, that's the responsibility of people and we have too much of that irresponsibility going on around here. And it, and you know, nobody knows what's going on on the upper Buckhorn. Ha! I can tell you. Um, the next thing I have is uh Lori, if you want to use me as a um con- uh contact point for the upper Buckhorn here, i.e. County Road forty-four H, I will be available for you. Um, it just, I just look at things and I say, oh, God, it's getting worse. Um, this issue of erosion control, uh we can look out of our breakfast nook window and see where a fellow has put a road in up probably a, I'll call it a hill, but it's probably a mile long. It's a dirt road. He put it in. Uh, the grade is greater than twelve percent in many places. I don't see how anybody's ever going to use that road, but as soon as you put a road in, therein lies a road for erosion. And people don't keep those roads up and that's what happens. You have another erosion pile going into one of these watercourses. Um, the last thing I have, and I sent this uh question to Lori personally, and maybe she can answer it. Um, how do you know it's an emergency and you should get to work on it?
All right, so um, yeah, I thought about this question. I like the question a lot. Um, but the, really, the way that we determine an emergency and Derek can talk to this as well is it's usually impacts, you know, as soon as we start to see impacts. Um, we have a few areas, you know, for example, in the county that are typically the early flood areas, you know, where we know if they start to flood, we're going to start to see some bigger problems. You know, obviously the fire area is different because um that whole area is now changed. So we have to look at the changing conditions and we have to give it some time to figure out where, I mean, we do have hydrology. We do know where some debris flows are going to be. Um, but there's also going to be some surprises along the way too. Like you mentioned that road, you know, if if that becomes a problem area, it might not be something on our radar. So usually an emergency is is impact-driven where we start to get reports of problems in an area and then somebody goes out and they check it out. Or if somebody uh needs to be rescued, obviously from Derek's, you know, world, um that's when we consider something an emergency. Um, it's impact-driven. I don't know if that's what you're getting at, but that's kind of how I think of an emergency. Derek, did you have anything else?
Yeah, that sounds about right. And to kind of tack on, um, I know my entire unit has a full day scheduled later this month where we're going to be out and about looking at these uh a lot of the areas Lori identified as those high-impact areas, kind of figuring out what we think is going to happen. Uh, there are areas we know that were um problem areas after the Cameron Peak Fire. Um, so kind of looking at those areas, comparing them, is there something similar terrain features in the uh, I'm sorry, problem areas from the High Park? Looking at those terrain features, do we have something similar in the Cameron Peak area to kind of start those plans? And then again, when these rainstorms come, you know, my unit, we will check the uh, check the radar, check the perceived or the proposed track and that's one of our jobs is to be out there monitoring this stuff. Um, trying to cat, get ahead of it. Hey, we think this is starting to build up. We need to start getting some stuff out, try to get ahead of it. And some of it, maybe it just comes in so fast that it's happened by the time we get there, but we know from experience that this will happen again. So we can put efforts into start to mitigate the next rain event possibly. Um, or put out warnings, hey, whoever's in the Monument Gulch area, we've got another thunderstorm coming in. Um, so you need to be prepared that you may not be able to get in or you may not be able to get out uh depending on what happens when it happens.
And to tie into that, uh, there are two things going on, um and they're both in partnership between OEM and the Emergency Services Group. So so one is uh we're putting additional stream gauges along the Pooter. And we don't typically have um heavy rain events, you know, that high up in altitude. And so there weren't really any needs for rain gauges past a certain point, I think rustic or something like that in the past. But now that the fire has happened, they are installing some additional rain gauges. And and everybody in the county from an emergency services perspective is tied into that. So we can get the alarms when it starts raining and we can see when we're starting to see some problems. So again, that's kind of that early warning is also part of that emergency piece. Um, and then the second thing is, is we've been working with the emergency services on the debris flow data. And we're starting to talk with the Laramie Emergency Telephone Authority about um doing some polygons. Um, so mapping uh on certain areas that we think that there might be debris flows so that those areas are already set up in the dispatch centers and they can just call out on those folks. If we do start to see some issues, because things can happen very quickly in a fire area, we could get some warnings out to to specific debris flow areas. So we're in the initial stages of that right now. Uh, but we do have a meeting coming up where we're going to talk through that some more. So again, we're always monitoring. It's it's part of our job is to just kind of monitor conditions, see what's going on. We do work with all of our different agencies and organizations, so they'll let us know too if they're starting to see some issues as well. And then, and then we just respond as appropriate.
Thank you, Lori. Michelle, would you share the comment from Macon Bright, please?
Absolutely. So this goes back to our earlier conversation um about fuels. Um, so she says, this is a follow-up comment. I reached out to the Forest Service and they are supporting commercial wood collection due to the volume and safety. Permits limit county resident access points for wood. Biochar and Berthet is getting most of the commercial loads and that is reducing supply and creating inflation. Two hundred and fifty a cord is almost double what it was last year. County needs to be aware of the economics involved. Wood equals food. Thanks. So that might actually be kind of a question for Commissioner or a comment for Commissioner Capalis. Um, go ahead.
Well, just, yeah, just to acknowledge that. And I think that in terms of our, you know, short-term and long-term recovery efforts and, you know, everything from looking at 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 climate smart Limer County framework to um uh updating our our um uh hazard mitigation strategies, I think we are looking at uh, you know, obviously forest health and how we can uh better harvest, you know, certainly the um the trees that are posing a greater, you know, wild wildfire risk and 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 all of those other things. So I think we're not ignoring that and I think that's all in the mix as we, you know, look forward the next couple of years and and certainly beyond, when most of us are anticipating uh warmer temperatures, uh different precipitation patterns, and that has implications for, you know, for flooding for wild, you know, extreme weather events. And so I think we're paying attention to that. I don't know if you folks want to add anything.
Yeah, just really quick, um, yeah, we, we've been working with, I mean, I think both the state legislature and the federal legislature is working on mitigation for wildfire, which has more attention now than I think it ever has had before. And one part of that that I think is essential for us in Limer County is the ability to do work on federal lands. And so um both Senator Bennett and Senator Hickenlooper sent a a joint letter to um the Interior Secretary just to talk through um that need and also the ability for us to do emergency watershed protection on federal lands as well. So hopefully some of the new um initiatives, both at the state level and the federal level, will um prioritize mitigation as much as it prioritizes other areas of emergency management. Um, because that's really the key is to build a more resilient community. You have to look at it holistically. I can't just do something, you know, on our little parcel of land that's county-owned or or work with private landowners. Really, you have to have a holistic project area. And in most of that forest, you know, is on US Forest Service land. So I think that those are good, good measures coming up. We're watching it.
Derek, is there anything you want to add, Derek, or shall we move on?
Uh, we can, we can move on.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments, Michelle?
So Al has his hand raised.
And yes, um, I just, a- again, Hal, with the greatest respect, just to be mindful that we also want to give other folks an opportunity. Um, and and then if we're done with um uh, you know, what we've been talking about for now, we'll, we'll never be done with it, frankly. It would be interesting from my perspective to hear from Lori and 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 Derek regarding uh this, this alleged pending snowstorm. But Hal, go for it, man.
Okay, here's, here's the, it's a, it's a suggestion. It's not a question. The issue is, um, do you folks do a lot of this stuff from the office? I'm I'm telling you to get out, talk to people, walk the mud. Uh, without doing that, you're doing a lot of theoretical stuff and it just doesn't work. I got caught by something like this years and years ago in my career. So my suggestion is talk to people if they're willing to talk to you. Uh, I know it gets a little bit like Appalachia up here on the Buckhorn where you'll be met at the door with a gun and told to get off their property, but you're going to be able to talk to some people that actually watch what's going on. I'm done. Thank you.
And and Hal, I appreciate when I, I had the privilege of visiting your uh, your home up the Buckhorn that you weren't at the door with a gun, so I'm grateful for that. And and as you, I'm sure you can agree, we had a very good visit, you know, better understanding the realities of the Buckhorn Creek and County Road forty-four H and, you know, looking at the different culverts, looking at the de- debris issues. So I I'm, I know Lori's out in the field. I know Derek is out in the field and and the commissioners, um, you know, we, we also need to be in the field as much as possible connecting with folks. This is one way to do it, but we're, and we're limited, right? We can't, we're limited to virtual, but looking forward to the summertime when maybe we can be out uh with folks.
Yeah, and to add to that, um, you know, we did do a risk assessment, which is data-driven, but anytime you do that, you have to ground truth the data. So Storm Mountain and um the Retreat was a really good example of that, where the data didn't really show a a lot of problems in that area, but we got some reports from enough folks and we were talking through the data that we wanted to look at it. So when we did all of our site visits of all these different areas, we went down to the Retreat and drove up the road. And that's when the hydrologists and the people from the Natural Resource Conservation Service said, this is a problem area. This, this is going to be a huge issue that we need to try to figure out a a project around. So we definitely do, I definitely agree with you, Hal, that we have to be out in the field. Derek's group lives in the field, so they're always out and about. Um, but yeah, we're always going to take the data that we get, the hydrology, and then we're going to try to ground truth it. The National Weather Service did the same thing. They're trying to figure out what their warnings need to look like. And then they said, yeah, we have all this data, but we need to go out there and and take a look at it. So I totally agree with you. I also agree about the guns in the Buckhorn.
Commissioner, do we want to move on to um this, the update on the snowstorm?
Yes, Michelle.
Let's do that. Lori, go forth. Tell us about the snow.
All right. So I know everybody woke up this morning and was like, there's no snow. This is not a storm. And uh you always worry about that, you know, when we have this big event and you do all the hype and then nothing happens because that's how weather works. Um, but this snow is definitely coming. Uh, we just talked to the National Weather Service this morning in a briefing at eight o'clock. Um, so you guys will see in the kind of the mountain areas, it's probably, it's already snowing in Estes. We already got reports of that. Um, it's going to be raining and snowing soon in those uh foothill areas. And then by um eleven o'clock to noon, we should start seeing some snow down here. It might not stick right away because it's been so warm. Um, but we're supposed to get, you know, up to one to two inches an hour. So it's going to come, it's going to come heavy when it does start. Um, so it's really good if you guys have things you want to get done, do those before noon today and try to get off the road so you don't have to be rescued by Derek's group. Um, so that's kind of where it's going to start. And then it's really heavy snow all throughout Sunday night into Sunday throughout the day. Um, and then it starts to taper off Sunday afternoon and then overnight until Monday. So we do think we are going to have some impacts on Monday, um because of just so much snow. So Estes Park is the epicenter of this storm. I don't know if you guys seen the models, but it looks like the Eye of Sauron because it's just, it's extreme weather there. So they were saying, you know, three to five feet in Estes. Today, they said for the town itself, they're looking more two to four feet. Um, but around that area, you know, three to five feet is possible. Um, and then in the lower areas, they're really looking at the one to two feet. They did say that it's very high probability um for like the Fort Collins and the urban corridor to get at least eighteen inches um down in this area. So we will definitely see um travel impacts, you know, overnight. The good news about this storm is it seems to be starting later than what they originally had thought. So the daytime activity today might not be as impacted. So if everybody gets home and they're in their homes, then tomorrow morning, what the National Weather Service said is they might not be able to get out of their homes. But that's okay because then they're not on the roads. They're safe. Everything's good. Um, so that's kind of the winter storm, uh kind of what we know as far as the weather. What we've done for planning is we've obviously been working with Sheriff's Office and CDOT, State Patrol, all of our other partners through emergency services. The utilities companies were on our briefing this morning. Just everybody's ready, you know, we had some time with the storm and we have the lessons learned from the bomb cyclone a couple of years ago. Um, so really, everybody's gotten as ready as we can be. It's really just going to be about what impacts do we see? And then how do we manage those impacts? Um, we do have some shelters established. We have some warming centers established for people who might get stranded. Um, and I don't know what else to give you guys. I don't know if you guys have any questions about the storm. Um, but otherwise, uh, hopefully you guys get your errands done early this morning and then just, you know, bunker in and and then it's just a nice snow day tomorrow.
Lori, I want to plug really quickly, um, no call alerts. And if people want to get alerts about the snowstorm, um, obviously you can follow us on social media, but truly the best way to get alerts is if you text the word LC snow to eight 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 seven seven seven. Um, you will get text message updates. Uh, you know, when roads close, we have to open shelters, things like that will come, come through that text message update.
Thank you, colleagues. I think folks can better understand why, as one of three elected officials representing the people of Limer County, I I'm constantly somewhat in awe of the dedication and the competency of, you know, the people that are out doing the work and making us look good most of the time. So thank you to Derek and Lori. I I I think now we could, um, if there are no other questions about snow and wildfire risks and and um, you know, trying to prevent flooding and debris flows, I I'm happy to, if there are particular questions that folks would like to ask me regarding other issues that the county's dealing with, I um, I mentioned earlier that I I'm happy to talk about land use code update. You know, COVID nineteen, as far as where we're at with um our Level Up program and dial frameworks and and vaccinations. Whatever folks are most interested in and thinking that will will probably end in about ten or fifteen minutes so that if people want to transition to the other town hall, they have that option. I see there's a question in there, Michelle, I, or a comment. I haven't looked at it.
Yes, um, Kai says, and fire cleanup, please. Not one hundred percent sure what she means by that.
Fire.
She's gonna, she's gonna, hold on, I'm gonna, there you go, Kai. Just unmute yourself.
Thank you. It's a lot easier to speak these things than write. Um, it was uh talking about the volunteer work. So the link that you said, perfect, and for fire cleanup.
Yes, thank you. So just a heads up for folks. Kai had messaged about um volunteer links for trail, trail work and stream cleanup work. And I typed out an answer in the Q and A and she's also looking for fire um cleanup. So I will put that in the Q and A as well. Um, so Commissioner, there is another question from Kostas. Commissioner Capalis, does the county- Commissioner Kafalis, does the county have plans to increase their disaster budget above the 2% it currently allocates? Considering everything we're talking about.
The short answer is yes, we've already done that. Lori can speak to that in more detail, but certainly last year in the fall, we did take funds that we have in our general fund balance, I think nine point something million. And again, Lori can provide details. Thank goodness she's still with us. We also are looking at, I mean, I think in general, you know, we've brought on at least one more staff, actually two staff people. I, I thought in the emergency management office, because we're seeing that these kinds of issues, we need to have better staffing capacity and, and I don't know what, how we've exceeded the two and a half percent. But the commissioners get it that we need to be better prepared. And Lori, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, one thing about Laramo is they have consistently been very good about having a healthy reserve. You know, other counties haven't had that in the past. And then when they face a disaster, they don't have the funds because usually we have to pay upfront and get reimbursed for disasters. So you have to have the funds ready. So the county's been very good about having a healthy reserve and I hope that we continue that forward because we've needed it in, in times of emergency. Also, as Commissioner Kafalis mentioned, we have set aside $9.2 million as a baseline recovery budget for the Cameron Peak Fire. And this was done from lessons learned from High Park, some of the expenses we had from High Park. And it's to allow us to really just move through this event quickly. So that if, you know, a funding opportunity comes up and we can grab it right away, but we need to provide a match, we can do that pretty quickly because we already have the support of the commissioners. So that is ready and available. And that's what's going to help us fund the, the NRCS projects that we have, the Natural Resource Conservation projects that we have this summer. And then also our FEMA match for some of the debris operations that we're doing. Hopefully that answers your question.
And Lori, just looking forward, I, I think I would also add to Costas and others is that, you know, our budget year, the county's budget year is the calendar year. So right now we're operating in the 2021 budget, but we, we are beginning the process of looking at formulating our 2022 budget. And we actually are updating our budget website and I imagine that Michelle can do her magic to, to put a link to that. But we're trying to be even more transparent regarding our budget process. And to make it more user friendly for folks to participate, there's, there's a tool that we've developed and we're looking to update that. But it's, it's a way, it's, what are we calling it? Oh darn. But it, but it's an interactive tool that we actually are working with a company in Denver and it's it's a way, it builds your own budget. And if you look at that on the budget, off the budget website, you'll see that it's an opportunity to weigh in on what are some of the priorities. And, and, and so any way you can spread the word on that. But we are, you know, typically folks don't get involved in the budget process, but we really need you to be involved in the budget process to see if, you know, where we're putting money reflects the values and priorities of the, you know, of Laramo County. And certainly this, you know, emergency preparedness, adaptation, mitigation, looking at issues related to climate change, you know, those are things that we're trying to figure out. You know, where to dedicate resources because as you know, we have to have a balanced budget. We're not like the federal government. They, they seem to have the ability to pull money out of the sofa, but I, the cushions, but I, it's different than that. So I, I wanted to offer that because I really think it's important that folks get involved in the budget process. Thanks for putting that up. Michelle and Lori, gosh, thank you.
I'm not seeing questions, Commissioner. So this is probably the good time to update on anything you wanted to touch base on here in the next maybe five minutes.
Okay, I'll, I'll just go through a couple of things really, really quick. And, and again, I want to make sure I don't forget to just express my really genuine gratitude to Derek Rosenquist with the Sheriff's Office Emergency Services. Who's up there, up there in Estes Park. And of course Lori Hodges. You know, it's a tremendously collaborative, coordinated, comprehensive effort. And, you know, regarding budgets and, and emergency management, you know, one of the examples of that is where we, we put some money into co-locate with LITA, our, our Laramo Emergency Telephone Authority and our EOC. Historically, the Emergency Operations Center has been housed at the Sheriff's Administrative Office over there on midpoint. And now we're going to be creating this co-location, which I think is going to be a regional thing and it's going to help us in a lot of stuff. But very quickly, a couple of updates. One is on the theme of getting involved in, in county government and holding us accountable and, and, you know, having these relationships. We are doing our spring recruitment for boards and commissions. And we have about 26 boards and commissions. We're thinking about adding some, a couple of others perhaps. But we have about 300 volunteers throughout the county that, that participate in these boards and commissions. A couple of them are statutory, but most of, most of them are advisory. So there's the link. Once again, Michelle does her Zoom magic. And if, if, if folks are interested, they should check it out. And I think the deadline for applying to where you'll see applications being accepted. The deadline is April 18th, I believe. And then once we receive applications, you know, the next couple of months after that, we'll go through interview processes. And many of these openings will occur as of July 1. That's one thing I wanted to mention. The second thing, that's kind of easier, not as complex as all this other stuff that we're doing is one of the boards that I serve as the liaison to is called the Environmental and Science Advisory Board. And indeed there are, will be openings there as well. But one of the, one of their charges is annually, we do this environmental stewardship award. And, and so if you go to that, you know, that site, and there it is again, it's just amazing how that happens. I think we're accepting applications. You know, you can self-nominate yourself. You can, if you see an organization or an individual that has done outstanding work related to environment, environment and environmental stewardship, I think the deadline there is the end of this month, March 31. I believe that when we have, say that again?
March 28th.
Oh, three days, yes. Thank you, Michelle. And, and at, at the last ESAB meeting on Tuesday, we meet once a month on Tuesday nights. I, I believe we had a brief discussion about this and I think we'd only received about three applications. So if you could spread the word on that, it's a really good way to honor folks who are doing, you know, this kind of work. And I don't know. What, what else should I talk? I mean, are folks interested in anything in particular? Or, or do folks want to just do as Lori Hodges and I'm sure Derek Rosenquist would suggest that if you have any errands to do, or if you want to get out and take a walk unless you're good at skiing and that sort of thing, you might want to do it in the next couple of hours. But there's a lot of
I'm going to get a walk-in, Commissioner.
What's that?
That I'm going to get a walk-in because I don't know the next time we're going to be able to leave our house.
I know. I, I, I'm thinking about, I live 10 minutes away from the courthouse. And we've actually shifted our schedule on Monday. You know, we had a work session in the morning for Criminal Justice Services. We moved that to Wednesday. Work sessions are broadcast. You can go to laramo.org and listen to all of these things. And then we had our standing afternoon work session with community planning. That's also been pushed, you know, till Wednesday. And then we're supposed to have this Estes Park meet and greet when, Monday afternoon, but we'll see those folks might be helping other neighbors shoveling and and just supporting our first responders. But I, I, I think I'll stop there and, and I'd just say thank you to everyone. And, and if folks have particular questions and, you know, my cell, my cell phone is available. You can email me. I can give you updates on land use code, strategic plan. You can go to our website regarding the data dashboard, the, you know, the COVID-19 stuff. And we're actually making a lot of darn good progress regarding, for folks who want vaccinations, you know, we're, we're, we're doing really well. And, and you probably saw the newspapers and the governor suggesting that by mid-April or so, any, you know, adults can sign up, you know, you know, to, to receive the vaccine, which I think is moving us in the direction that we all want to move in. Cause even I'm getting tired of wearing face masks to be, to be quite honest. I'll stop there. And again, thanks to Lori and Derek and Michelle. And please be safe. Please get your walks in. Lori, do you have any wisdom for us?
Hydrate. You should always hydrate.
Derek, do you have any wisdom?
I think a lot of it's been covered, but yeah, if you do store tonight and tomorrow, good nights for hot chocolate.
All right then. Michelle, thanks a lot. I wish you all well. Please take care.
Hi, everyone.